Okay. So, a special meeting of subcommittee on investments and calling it to order. We have a quorum. Actually, we have more than a quorum.
Super quorum.
We have a super quorum. First item of business is approval of the minutes from our last meeting on January 22nd. Do I have a second?
Some more.
Any comments, changes, edits? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. The next item is actually, I would imagine, turn it over to Janet and the folks from Cambridge, Barry, for review. Thank you.
We're here today for the annual asset allocation review. As you know, the current asset allocation was approved in December 2008. And at that time, given the financial crisis that we were going through, the committee decided it was really not the right time to make any moves in the alternative investment area. However, since that time, we have done a pretty good job of implementing the new asset allocation and we're okay with the traditional asset classes. But we still have 15% that remains to be addressed. And so, our objective today is to revisit the decision with regard to alternative investments, not only in terms of the size of the allocation, but also implementation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cambridge Associates. Mark Fowler is here and Thomas Smith-Jefferson, and they will be speaking to you about the specifics of the alternative area.
Maybe before we go into that discussion, let's take a look at page three in the package that you've got. This will show you the target portfolio structure as we're working with today. And you can see also how we've moved towards those targets from the original levels. And again, the hedge funds and non-marketable, so the alternatives consist of two different things. It consists of hedge funds and it consists of what we call non-marketable alternatives, which is private equity venture capital primarily. But you can see that on all the other areas, we have moved closer to the targets. We're still not there because, again, these 15% are sort of unallocated and have to be found somewhere else in the portfolio. But you can see that we've chosen a relatively conservative way of going towards approaching these targets. We've allocated gradually towards emerging markets. We've allocated gradually towards real assets. And actually, those areas are expected to be fully funded by the end of March. We did a portion at the end of January and we'll do the last portion at the end of March. And so, where we are overweight now, which would be the potential funding areas for an alternative allocation, would be the convertible space, which we kept so far, partly because of valuation. It was quite attractive back in the beginning of 2009. So, we've kept them, but that would be one place that's not foreseen as being a permanent thing in the portfolio and one that would logically go away if and when we choose to go ahead with hedge funds. The other thing that are overweight is fixed income and then U.S. equity and non-U.S. equity are overweight and probably will be even if we implement a hedge fund allocation because there's still a non-marketable allocation that might, that will eventually be implemented, but over time. So, we expect that at least for the U.S. and non-U.S. equity, there will be an overweight for foreseeable future. And with that, we can turn to page four.
The convertible bonds, this was a quick question.
Yep.
I don't know if we got in the back of this presentation. Where are they valued now in comparison to where we purchase price or any of that? Are we underwater or not? We're not?
No. No. It's about a 5% allocation. Again, again, in terms of valuation, whether they are attractive or not, they were very attractive beginning of 2009, as with all products that have, and convertible bonds are basically a combination of, or sort of infalls in between equity and fixed income. Equity valuations obviously come much more closer to sort of average and normal. The same thing happens with the convertible. Spreads have come in on the corporate bond side. So, from both the bond side and the equity side, valuations are much closer to what we would call fair value, whereas they were a pretty solid buy back in November, December last year.
Thank you.
If you turn to page four, you can see that the asset allocation that we have, which we sort of contrasted to the colleges and universities, both our, the one in your P S I is 100 to 300 million, but also all colleges and universities that we have in our client database. And you can see that the differences are pretty striking and the main difference is this absence of hedge funds. And again, obviously, the fact that other people are doing it is not necessarily an argument that you should do it, but on the other hand, there is a reason why most other institutions have chosen to do it and the reason is, and Mark will go into, that hedge funds do represent a good balance between some growth, but also add also some hedged elements that presents a good characteristics.
And just to go into a little bit more detail about the underlying institutions, you see 151 institutions, colleges and universities that we're reporting. There are two within that group that aren't currently doing hedge funds and you are one of them. There's one another. So, most of your peers are doing that. We'll talk a little bit about why some of those peers are doing it and how we think about it. You know, this is something that some committee members have expressed reservations about, so this is a time to get those reservations on the table and let us help address them.
Well, to me, the point is, should we address it or you want to go more into it to talk about it before we bring up our questions?
It might be better if we get to talk about the risk characteristics.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We'll go to the next section, which is a memo that I know has been distributed a couple times to the committee. We won't go into this in too much detail, but I hit on some of the highlights. And then, you know, I guess before we do that, just starting with the asset allocation review, you know, getting back to what your primary objective is, is to return 5% real, so 5% after inflation, in order to maintain purchasing power. And the way we think about that, in order to achieve that goal, you're going to have to have an equity domed portfolio. Go back to 1900, the real return on the stock market is 6%. Fixed income is closer to 2% or 3%. So, you're not going to get there through fixed income. You need to have equity in your portfolio to meet that objective. Since equities are volatile, you need to diversify that equity exposure to try and mitigate some of that volatility. And we've taken some steps to diversify the portfolio and, you know, the committee's caution about hedge funds and alternative assets in general has played out well. The things that we invested in first and made a priority, things like non-U.S. equity, emerging markets, and real assets, those are things that outperformed last year when the markets came roaring back. Now, we think with those asset classes approaching fairly valued and in some cases getting overvalued, we think adding to the hedge fund or implementing the hedge fund portfolio is a way to take some of that risk off the table. And we think about hedge funds more as a risk reducer than a return enhancer. We think of the private equity venture capital as something that will goose up returns, something better than the public markets. But for the hedge funds that we're talking about, we're looking at ways to reduce risk, have some equity-like return pattern with downside protection. And 2008 is a good example, when the equity markets were down 30% to 50%, depending on which market you're looking at, average hedge funds were down 15% to 20%. And of course, when the equity markets came roaring back, you know, the hedge funds haven't kept up with the strong equity markets, but you're still getting returns with some of these managers in the 20% range. So, less than what we experienced last year from the long only managers, but certainly on a two-year basis, the hedge funds have come out ahead. And, you know, if we go back looking at over the past decade, you know, a couple managers that we were looking at for your particular portfolio, they've returned 7% to 9% over the past decade when the equity market splat to slightly negative. So, to the extent that you can have investments in there that are less correlated to the market, that's going to improve your risk-adjusted returns and that's the reason we think it's worth considering. You have a question?
Can you tell me offhand what indexes that you are looking at in the hedge fund area to specifically invest in? What indices are you using?
For the space that we're looking at on the hedge fund, indexing is a different question. There's lots of ways you can think about indexing. It's probably going to be a combination when we get down to it. But for, I think what we would consider is something like the H F R I Fund to Fund Index as a reasonable approximation for what's going on in the hedge fund world. Other institutions may look at a absolute return benchmark, so T-bills plus 5% or T-bills plus 6%, which is a fine long-term objective, but over the shorter-term time periods, there's going to be very little correlation to. So, for periods like 2008, you know, your hedge funds still lost money, so you're not going to keep up. 2009, when the hedge funds, you know, performed much better than the T-bills plus 5%, you're going to look better. It's an appropriate long-term goal, but to adopt that, you have to recognize that it's not going to be.
Where do you see putting CUNY in the hedge funds in special situations, in Regulation D? Where?
We think, first of all, with the hedge funds, one of the issues with hedge funds is some of these, there's more manager risk with hedge funds. A lot of these organizations are smaller organizations and so, we think diversification is important. And so, for your asset size, we're recommending hiring fund to funds or more than one fund to funds, so you're going to get manager diversification. You're outsourcing those decisions to a fund to fund manager who's looking at this on a daily basis. And if an issue crops up with the underlying manager, they'll deal with it. And so, we don't have to put it at the committee level. Of course, there's a fee with that.
I was going to say, we would be acquiring that at a premium.
That's right. So, there's an extra layer of fees by going the fund to fund route.
And we're not that large of a fund.
Right. So, but the benefit is you get more diversification. And again, we've got the results of these particular firms that we have in mind in the book and you can see that even after all those fees, they've done a pretty good job.
Professor Martel?
In looking over the asset allocation targets, it struck me that my personal preference would be to have more hedge funds and less non-markable investments. If I looked at this, I would think, you know, 15% in the hedge funds and maybe my first gambit was 15% in the hedge funds, zero in the non-markables, because I think a portfolio of our size tying up money for an extended period of time, given the potential liquidity needs, might not be a great strategy. But certainly, we need the extra burn and risk characteristics that hedge funds bring to us. When you look at a fund to fund, you're looking at a portfolio of hedge funds, you're getting some diversification within the asset class, if you want to refer to them as an asset class. So, I mean, to me, it would be 15, 0, or 10, 5, hedge funds, private equity. And the reason I would be leaning more towards hedge funds is strictly the liquidity issue and the fact that, you know, 5% of what we have is not a heck of a lot for a private equity threshold, even if we're just trying to get our toe wet.
Well, just like we had 5%, we haven't given permission to fund it yet either.
Right. I would argue for a higher allocation of hedge funds. I think we should. I think it's a mistake to be this conservative with the portfolio. Matter of fact, I don't think this is a conservative portfolio. I actually think a portfolio with some hedge funds in it would be a more conservative portfolio because of the risk-reducing characteristics you tend to get historically out of this. You don't, you know, you don't get the outstanding returns in a strong bull market like the last 12 months, but on the other hand, you get more consistent performance. So, I would argue that not only would we be increasing our return, but we'd be reducing our risk a little bit.
On the private equity side, what would you be interested in investing in distressed equities, distressed firms?
We think distressed is going to be an opportunity over these coming years and you can access that both through the private equity side, but you can also get some of that through the hedge. That's, you know, when you talk about hedge fund strategies, again, hedge fund is just a vehicle term. You really have to look at underlying strategies. So, these fund to funds are going to be investing in long-short strategies. So, managers that, you know, are going long and if they see something that's valued, going short. So, pretty straightforward. However, managers are also view credit as an interesting opportunity coming forward and so, they're rotating some of their portfolios. You know, earlier last year, a lot of them were investing in senior secured bank debt, which was trading at short valuation discounts. So, they're rotating the capital into some of those types of strategies. As those have been bid up, they're rotating the portfolio into other opportunities. Event arbitrage is something that has also been, you know, a year ago, you could get returns in the 20% range. It's probably come down to 7% to 11%. You know, talking to some of the managers out there, they think that because the capital has been reduced in that space, if you see a couple big mergers coming through, that'll soak up the capital and that event arb space will provide some pretty attractive returns again. But 7% to 10%, when you think about what you can get on the T-bills or bond portfolio, still is attractive and depending on your outlook for the equity markets, could be competitive.
You made a recommendation for hedge funds. You didn't make one for the other category, unless I missed.
Private equity, no, I don't think.
No.
Were you thinking of actually making a specific investment?
Not at this time. I think the priority for us, because private equity is going to take a while to put together and I don't think there's any rush, these fundraising cycles have prolonged as institutional investors are taking a little bit longer.
Yes.
To make the decisions. I don't think there's any rush there. So, I think that's something we need to talk to Janet about and come up with a strategy. But it would be through a fund to funds that would be looking and things like buyouts, you know, we don't think there's any large buyouts. Or a middle market, there might be some more opportunities. But we've got some time to evaluate that. We're not coming with a manager recommendation at this meeting. It's still a work in progress.
You're not thinking of a specific investment for the fund. You're thinking about a pool of, you know, hiring a professional manager for this asset class.
That's right. So, you get more diversification, where you wouldn't have enough diversification doing it directly at your asset size. And you'd also get some vintage year diversification by.
And it also, oh, sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to reinforce what you're saying and I think it's a sensible strategy. One, I don't think the portfolio is big enough to really play in the private equity space and that's really a function more of liquidity, more than anything else, about tying up the money when, because a lot of this money we use for financial aid and so, we want to get access to capital if we need it. The idea of a hedge fund into the portfolio is basically to get some equity-type returns with some downside protection, as you have said. And I would stay away from picking a particular hedge fund, whether it's a long-short fund or a statistical arbitrage or a distressed strategy. I mean, these are all different strategies. It would be much better, I think, to have a mixture of funds, you know, fund to funds. Of course, you have the issue of higher fees in a situation like that. And I think around a 10% position is sort of a right position for us with the size of the portfolio that we have. I mean, we don't, you know, we're not in a position, I think, to go very aggressively, but I, not to do it, I think, is wrong. So, I would very strenuously talk about a fund to funds and do it on the basis of manager, you know, the kind of managers that you have confidence in and that you've worked with before. And really, to take a position where liquidity is really a driving force here and not tie up the money where, you know, you have to, you can't get to it if you need it. So, I would stay away from private equity at this particular point.
There's too much of a lockup involvement. I still, I'm sorry, Chancellor, I still look at the fact that I have a fiduciary responsibility and I feel that if we did 10%, that would be a bit much for the size of our portfolio. Last time, I said 5% max. We are a public institution. We don't have, God bless you, you brought us wonderful donors, large donors, but we just, I don't, I don't see that in the immediate future.
You know, when the equity, when the equity space took a real shot in 2008, it was much better to be in a hedge fund world because you had some of that. I forget the differential. I think the S and P was down about 37% and the hedge fund world was, I don't know, 18, 17, 18, something.
It was more than 20.
So, all right, 15 to 20. So, there was a good, you know, everybody lost money, but it'd be better to lose less money than more money. So.
I think it's worth pointing out the analysis we did on page 10 of this book. Sort of gets at the risk characteristics of the fund. And this keeps you sort of, a couple managers that we think are worthy of consideration. We've been, we've approached these managers with Janet. But you can see over this 10-year period, you know, focus on the risk first. So, you have the S and P 500 there. Standard deviation or volatility of those returns is roughly around 18. These two managers, their standard deviation is about 8. And you can see how that compares in between the bonds and the equity markets, which is what we're talking about, lower risk than the equity markets, but, you know, it's going to be more risky than fixed income. But you can also take a look at the returns and compare that to what's going on, both in the equity markets and the fixed income markets. And I think if you get good managers, you should be able to have a attractive return profile with, and these are investments that are going to have lower correlations than anything else you have currently in the portfolio. So, international equity, emerging markets equity does provide some diversification, but the correlations are much closer to the one than what you're going to get with a hedge fund.
Rick, you have it?
Yes. I'd just like to say, I am no investment specialist and I defer, A, to the Chancellor and the rest of you who actually know something about this. But I think from a legal perspective, the decision, whether it's 5% or 10%, falls squarely within the business judgment rule. All be fulfilling your fiduciary responsibilities, whichever way you come out. But you obviously all have to, each have to be comfortable with your own judgment as to where on that spectrum you'd like to be.
I think the most important, the term I saw in your report, it's headline risk, really the issue.
And I, oh, sorry.
And the one other thing I wanted to bring up, and we've discussed this internally, is on the issue of 5 versus 10%. We actually had this very same conversation. And one of the benefits of the 10% versus the 5, given the size of this portfolio, is that at the 10% level, it's large enough to allow you to pick two different firms, which gives you a diversification.
I need that equilibrium.
Yes. Well, you said that.
And I'd also say to the point about donors, because that's obviously a really important consideration and we saw a lot of reaction from them. We work with a number of colleges and universities, obviously, and we saw a lot of reactions from donors after 2008 with the portfolio crashes that occurred. But I'd say the main reaction we saw from donors was just a general sort of disbelief that the portfolios went down as much as they did. It wasn't, we never had problems with the fund to funds that we chose. There wasn't any specific worry about that part of it. There was obviously questions around the Madoff and we luckily didn't have any clients that were purely in Madoff or anything like that. But in terms of fund to funds, with the diversification you get, there wasn't really any negative reaction specifically to the hedge fund piece of it. It was more a broad risk, if you will.
Professor?
I have two questions. One is, the last target allocation was 5%, yet in actuality, the allocation is 0. How does that happen to be? Because I think this committee did recommend 5% last time.
It recommended 5% Professor, but told the staff not to implement until we had another meeting and we had further discussions.
Well, I would, although I don't vote here, I'm not a committee member, I would certainly support the implementation. The other concern I have is that we are, of course, hiring and paying for good investment advice and I think there ought to be some risk in not taking it. If our not taking it reduced our overall return, I think we should consider that we're paying for advice and we should seriously consider taking it.
Professor Martel?
I serve on a number of investment committees and, you know, when I look at page four, page four to me raises an issue for the committee, which is if the mean allocation to marketable alternatives is 19.4%, even if we went to my suggestion of 15%, we would still be below the mean for portfolios of our size. So, we could hardly be accused of acting in some way inappropriately, certainly within the bounds of what other similar sized, similar position institutions are doing. I think we've got a problem now. I mean, you know, if I looked at a portfolio, everyone's got, the average is 19 and we're at 0, that is, that's an issue that someone's got to explain. Being at 15 when the average is 19 is not something we have to explain. 10, I understand, we want to move cautiously, but I would still, I mean, to me, 15, 0 is a more conservative strategy with better upside potential than, and more liquidity than a 10-5 strategy. But I could live with certainly either one. But I would certainly move us up the curve on the hedge fund investment. I mean, that horse is off the barn. This is what people do.
Valerie?
My concern was making sure that we have, I think the Chancellor said it, that we have a large enough portfolio so that we can be diversified. So, to me, at 5%, you almost are obliged to be with one manager. And so, can you really, is it worth going in unless you have sufficient size to be, to have some, you know, our portfolio isn't huge. So, to not go in with what is still a Putin man's number at 10%, I think is wise. Because I feel more uncomfortable going in with just one exposure to one person than I do of the exposure of going in at 10%. I guess that's the way.
Matter of process.
No, I'm just going to say, I mean, you know, my thought is that the, I'm not sure if I would go to 15% right away, but I do think that we need to be a lot more active in this area and going to 10% seems to be a reasonable way to go and where we can get the protection. I really like that because I think that we've been maybe, I think it was right for us to be conservative, you know, when we were, but I think now the market is changing, you know, the dynamics are a lot more interesting. We need to really get in there and try to do some other things. I would go like for the 10-5 or something like that. Makes sense.
Before we talk about process, because I have a general idea of where we're going, though we're not all on the same page, I would like to suggest that we have more meetings of the subcommittee because meetings have been too far in between. We can meet when we have finance, fiscal affair committee meetings. We do get updates at those meetings, but I think it's important, if we're going to go down the path I think we're going down, we should meet at least quarterly. And if we have to do it on a different day, so be it, but we need to find the time to do it. I think it's the right thing to do from a diligence and from a fiduciary responsibility.
And it's going to be a dynamic time.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to be, meet more frequently.
So, from a process point of view, I think we should have a motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Yeah, well, no, we don't talk about the process for a second. The process to make a motion about what we want to do à la the allocation. Depending on how that vote goes, we need to go into executive session because we'll have to talk about firms and we don't do, and then come back into. I'd like to put forward a motion that we do enter into the hedge fund market at the 10% level and discuss managers and that we put the private equity at the 5% level, but again, not have, do any investments in private equity until such time as we can determine that.
I second him.
Okay.
That was bad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion and go into executive session.
Don't move.
We're in. Thank you.
Camera's off.
So, that's the.
All right. Move back on? All right. We're now back into regular session. I'll entertain a motion to, someone else want?
To allocate equally to the two managers recommended by Cambridge Associates.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Not sure that there's any further business, but I would like to talk about the fact that, you know, I think while we're in session, go back on the record and say that we, you know, we'll meet in connection with fiscal affairs meetings, either before or after, you know, those meetings, so that we meet more frequently and to see the results. Yes, sir?
At a future meeting, a discussion in the real asset class as why we went, the way we went as opposed to, for example, a we went as opposed to, for example, a long-only commodity fund.
Okay.
Not for now, just, you know, it's a question that I'm interested in, given the correlations and the movements and the fees.
Okay, right.
Can you first come to the meeting?
I do, I do. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone must join in.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.